Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order. We begin with our land acknowledgement statement. We acknowledge that the ground on which we live is the traditional territory of Caldwell First Nation, of the Three Fires Confederacy and the original people of Point Peely and Peely Island, and its surrounding lands and waters, and that of the here-on-wendot and windot peoples. We recognize and respect the First Nations who are stewards of the land and waters of Turtle Island, and who have embraced this stewardship since time immemorial. We would also like to acknowledge the contributions of other nearby First Nation communities and all original people across Turtle Island. We will now have a moment of silent reflection, followed by the playing of our national anthem. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem if you're able to. If we can get an adoption of the agenda for the September ninth, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting, moved by Council Burns, support by Council Richos Pagnolo, all in favor, and that carries. Any disclosures of opinion or interest? There being none. An adoption of our minutes over the regular meeting of council held August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, and they're asking to be adopted as presented. Moved by Deputy Mayor Capata, support by Council Renault, all in favor, and that carries. Mayor's comments, I do have a few today. This past weekend, we hosted our last call before fall event at the Event Centre at LaSalle Landing, and once again, it was a huge success. Saturday was completely sold out, and we had such great energy all weekend. I want to thank our staff, who always put in a ton of hard work to pull off these events, and a lot of hours are put in, so thank you to everyone involved. Also, a huge thank you to our vendors and the volunteers who make those events possible, and our community for coming out and supporting this event. Earlier today, if you haven't heard, I don't know where you're at, but it's everywhere. There were some exciting news in LaSalle, and we announced today that we received twenty-two point four million dollars in funding from the provincial government for the Howard Beaufort Stormwater Infrastructure Project. This is the largest grant that we have received in town LaSalle's history, and it's a huge step forward as we continue to grow. It means we'll have the right infrastructure in place to support both our new residents, but even more important, our existing residents, while helping us meet provincial housing goals in a responsible and sustainable way. So, a big thank you to Minister Sirma, who did come down for today's announcement, and MP Pelearity for their support and advocacy. This investment will help us build a stronger, more vibrant LaSalle for generations to come. A couple of quick reminders for this weekend. Saturday, September thirteenth, our LaSalle Fire Service will be hosting their car wash for a cause, and that's being held at Fire Station Two, which is on Front Road, from nine to one, and donations will support muscular dystrophy. And then this Wednesday, September seventeenth, the Small Business and Entrepreneurship Centre is hosting a free session right here at the Civic Centre on Starting a Small Business, and it runs from nine to ten a.m. and covers everything you need to know if you're looking to start your own business. That's all I have today. We have no public meetings or hearings, and so no presentations or delegations either. We can go right into our staff reports. Item one is the appointment of an engineer for the Howard Beuford Drainage Solution, and we have our Drainage Superintendent, Mr. McMillan.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. As council will recall, the town recently completed the environmental assessment process and finalized the master drainage study for the Howard Beuford Secondary Plan area. The next step in advancing the preferred drainage solution from the master drainage study is completion of the detailed design and preparation of any necessary drainage reports. Recently, the town published an RFP for Engineering Services, a request for proposal for Engineering Services for this work, and we received one submission to our RFP from Landmark Engineers Incorporated. Landmark and their team of subconsultants offer vast experience with both drainage solution, complex drainage design, and Drainage Act-specific works. And their submission was received at a price of six hundred and forty thousand dollars. Five hundred thousand dollars was included and approved in the twenty twenty-four budget for this project, which was to be funded from the Drain and Stormwater Management Reserve, and eventually funded through potential Drainage Act assessments. However, as you just mentioned, we all received the wonderful news this morning about the funding that the town will receive from the provincial government under the Housing Enabling Water Systems Fund, which will, of course, be an immense support for this project. So, we're recommending the award of this project to Landmark Engineers, Inc., and with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Council Richos Pagnolo.
Thank you through you. Have we done any work with Landmark before in the past?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we have done quite a few projects with Landmark. They also work quite closely with a number of our neighbors, neighboring municipalities, so we are very familiar with them.
Any other questions or comments?
Move the recommendation.
All right. Look how fast we move. We got the grant this morning, and we're already awarding it, so congratulations. Moved by Council Burns, support by Council Renault, all in favor, and that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item two, Lafferty Drain Minor Improvement, the final assessment, and back to you, Mr. McMillan.
Thanks again. This report is to close out the minor improvement project on the Lafferty Drain, which entailed the installation of a road crossing on the drain directly adjacent to Fields Avenue. The report for this project was adopted by council last year in June. Included in the report, the estimated cost for the project was two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. The final total project costs are equal to two hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and one dollars and sixty cents. Because this is a minor improvement project under the Drainage Act, all costs are borne by the proponent, and therefore, there's no cost to the town. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Members of council, any questions on that one? Moved by Deputy Mayor Capata, support by Council Carrick, all in favor, and that carries unanimously. Item three, our sanitary twin force main preliminary design, our Director of Public Works, Mr. Osborne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Tonight, we're looking for an approval to start the preliminary design on the twin force main. So, currently, we have one force main that runs from Pump Station One to Lu Romano Treatment Plant, and that handles all of the town's wastewater. We're at the point in our growth where we need to look at installing that twin to that force main. It was always designed to have that, and we're just at a point now where we have to have to do that work. So, we plan on doing the detailed design in twenty twenty-six, subject to the budget process, but we wanted to get a head start on the preliminary design mainly to do the topographic survey this fall and get that in before the winter, and to make sure we understand if we if we need or do not need property. We don't believe that we do, but we want to make sure that we don't. If we needed property, we may have to go through the environmental assessment process, which might change change it a bit, so we want to get an understanding of that over the winter here, and that's the reason we're bringing this forward kind of in advance of next year. The cost is one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred for this portion of the work, and it would be able to begin immediately, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Members of council, questions? Council Renault?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just as a reminder for us and the people who may be watching, currently, what is our cap of our sewage limit with only one main? And then what does it bring us to two? Knowing that we're going to put, I heard, ten thousand more homes, probably thirty thousand more people in LaSalle, how does this prepare us for the future? And one last thing, the timeline's on it.
So, our cap, we're getting close to that pipe basically running at a hundred percent of its capacity. It's not quite there, and there is some there is some leeway, but it's it's at the point where we need to move forward with this. So, if, you know, kind of looking at it from a cap perspective, we're getting quite close to that with our current population, and then it will take us right to full buildout once it's in. As far as schedule goes, ideally, we do the preliminary design now, start the detailed design early next year as well, so that would be a line item in the proposed budget, and then hopefully have construction happen in twenty twenty-seven.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? One quick before you do. My question is, we've always known we've had to do this. It was always a plan. Are we ahead of the plan, or is this kind of when we expected to have to do it?
I don't know if I know the answer to that question. As far as when we, what year we projected to do it, I I always looked at it as just as a population. Perhaps Mr. Malicia might be able to answer that better, or Mr. Mara, but I'm not quite sure.
It's not often I get to answer an engineering question, so I'll just. I think when we originally had purchased the capacity at Lu Romano back in two thousand and one, we had thought that the the current pipe would be able to handle till we got to about forty thousand people. I think, though, that in that, at that time, there were a number of calculations based on how much effluent each household was producing, and so there was some variability with respect to that. So, again, this timeline is, we're pretty close to where we are, maybe a little ahead of schedule, but we're pretty close to where we thought we would be.
That's all the questions. So, I've moved by Council Renault, support by Council Richos Pagnolo, all in favor, and that carries. Item four, pickleball courts at the Valmer Complex. We have our Deputy C A O, Mr. Mara.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to work on trying to share my screen here, and hopefully, it all works out. So, tonight's report before you is a result from the twenty twenty-five budget deliberations. As part of that budget deliberations, administration brought back a capital project for three million dollars to build pickleball courts. As part of the twenty twenty-five budget deliberations, council approved administration to proceed forward with a maximum of three hundred thousand dollars to come forward with a preliminary design. That's where we are here tonight for for your for for this presentation. Although you've approved us for three hundred thousand dollars, we spent thirty thousand dollars to get to this point. There was a lot of things that we needed to look at relative to what was previously presented in twenty twenty-one, to what we currently know today, and what has what has occurred over the years, and in relative to cost escalations. During this time, we did public consultation with with the public through place speak and through a number of stakeholder meetings, so we've gathered input from the from the community relative to the project. So, before you tonight, up on the screen is the proposal that's that's here in front of you. The proposal consists of parking lot, a washroom facility, and ten pickleball courts as well. There is two practice walls, there is lighting, there is shade sales, seating, and all those aspects relative to the project. The washrooms and the and the parking lots are designed to provide services for both pickleball, for tennis, and for the Valmer Complex. Again, these washrooms are located right along Laurier, the main, one of the main walking trails, so this washroom facility is not solely for pickleball, it's for the public and for the general purposes of the use at the Valmer. There has been some some revisions to what the original concept was. Back in twenty twenty-one, council may recall a concept that was put forward, and that was put forward relative to works proceeding on both sides of Diott. When we further looked at that, we realized that that's going to be problematic, because we would put washroom on one side, and people would have to cross a road. Further, in twenty twenty-one, there was no contemplation of what the addition at the Valmer would look like. So, this has now been coordinated with a potential addition at the Valmer, and so the parking lot that you see is part of a permanent parking lot that would also complement the the addition at the Valmer. So, the parking lot is also going to continue to be expanded in the future to provide additional parking for a Valmer expansion. So, that is where we are at today. So, this is a bit of an aerial view of what the facility will look like. So, we have the existing four tennis courts, the the ten pickleball courts, and you can see the parking lot in Diott in the back. There has been some review, and I'll go back to this slide here. What we are looking at in the future is when there is a need for additional courts. We have we have some some preliminary designs of what would be required for additional courts, whether they be more tennis courts, whether they be more pickleball courts, whether they be other courts, tennis, basketball, volleyball, whatever that might be. There is a proposal, and we will come back in the future when those when that aspect happens, but there is an opportunity for us to remove that section of Diott between Mike Raymond and Laurier. It doesn't serve much of a purpose at this point. We were looking at those concepts, but at this point in time, we'll leave it alone. That's why we squeezed the ten the ten courts in there to leave Diott as it is and kind of worked towards trying to maintain some of that that aspect and not remove Diott at this time. But there is opportunities for us in the future to expand. As as we went through, as I mentioned, here's a list of all the the aspects that are being provided. And as we went through, we looked at the the relative concept and what those costs were. So, for the pickleball, the ten courts themselves were at about nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The forty-eight parking spots, again, we're looking at the forty-eight parking spots only. There is an additional thirty spots that we're not looking to build at this point in time, but we're looking at about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars for that, and the washroom and storage building is about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So, in in total, when we look at this, we have the estimated construction cost, and then on top of those construction costs, we add in a number of contingency allowance and design fees. So, again, the design fee is still relatively the same. It's fifteen percent. Again, that that covers the architect's costs, that covers geotechnical investigations, legal legal plans, all of those things that people work for the town and 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 kind of work through. So, earlier tonight, we awarded a number of contracts to engineers, and so that that's what this aspect will cover. And again, these are all estimated construction costs at this point, so we would go through detailed design. If council approves us tonight, we will go through detailed design. We would be ready for tender sometime end of this year, early next year, and hopefully have it built and ready and commissioned by June or July of twenty twenty-six is what we would aim for. So, with that, that completes my presentation. In addition to the capital cost, there is going to be an operational cost of about thirty-five thousand dollars annually. Again, that's for washroom cleaning, maintenance of the the power requirements for the lighting and things of that nature, so there will be an operational budget impact of about thirty-five thousand dollars on an annual basis. So, with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. We do have a delegate here today. We have the President of LaSalle Pickleball Association, Silvio Civitri. If you want to come up and give your presentation, just hit the button and turn on the mic.
Good evening, Mayor Walsh and members of council.
Just going to have you pull the mic down so everyone in the back can hear you.
Thank you for the, is that better? Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm much better with a pickleball paddle in my hand than I am at public speaking, but I will I will try to get by with a little help from my friends, as you can see back there. I stand before you not just as a president of the LaSalle Pickleball Association, but as one voice representing the L P A membership and hundreds of active players and supporters in our town. LaSalle has something special. People feel it when they come here, whether they're visiting Markot for a friendly game of pickleball or cheering their friends on at the Valmer. This vote today is your chance to build on that feeling, to invest in something that's already bringing joy, health, and pride to hundreds in our community. Markot Park is already known across the region as legendary because for a few years back, LaSalle actually had the most pickleball designated courts of any community around here, including the city of Windsor. And so, people flock to Markot because there wasn't really anywhere else to play, and the feeling that they got there from the people there was always welcoming. Markot isn't really all that fancy, but the people are what makes it unbelievable. The inclusiveness, they're filled with energy, and I think that's the heart of LaSalle. But unfortunately, the passage of time and the demand for pickleball, we've we've outgrown these existing courts. We need a space that matches the spirit and momentum we've built. The plan before you, ten state-of-the-art courts, restrooms, shade, parking, isn't just a facility, it's a statement, and it's a bold statement. A statement that LaSalle is ready to lead, that we have a community that supports health, social connection, and smart growth. In the last year, the LaSalle Pickleball Association has directly provided the town with approximately thirty thousand dollars in court rentals. With this new facility, we expect the number to continue to grow, not just from direct rental fees, but in direct financial benefits from hosting regional, provincial, and national tournaments. Counselors, if you build it, they will come, and they will come in hordes. These events bring in players, spectators, families, and tourism dollars. They fill our restaurants, our small businesses. It's an economic ripple effect that benefits everyone. But we cannot compete with other facilities in the condition that we find ourselves in now. So, just keep in mind, you're not just building courts, you're investing in revenue, visibility, and community engagement. So, why is pickleball the fastest-growing sport in North America? Well, because it's not just a sport. Pickleball gets people moving, it connects generations. We have players in their seventies and kids starting out, playing on the same court, in the same game, laughing together. Imagine you playing on the court with your grandkids. It's it's amazing, an amazing thing. What other investment delivers economic returns, public health benefits, and community pride all in one? You've already done the groundwork, public consultation is done, a thoughtful design has been presented, a smart location has been picked. The report shows it's financially sound, within budget, and ready to move forward. Now, it just needs your support. This project will stand as a part of what this council accomplished, a project that makes life better for residents, brings people together, and shows that LaSalle isn't just keeping up, we're leading the way. Let's finish what we started. The LaSalle Pickleball Association is ready to keep working side by side with the town and recreation team, just as we've done up to this point, and will continue to do in the future. You provide the facility, and we will provide the positive energy, the expertise, and the volunteers to make sure our community gets the most out of this project. In conclusion, we're not here asking for a handout. We're here asking for the chance to keep building something amazing together as one. Counselors, this is your moment to say yes to growth, yes to community, and yes to a stronger, healthier LaSalle. Let's get it done. Thank you very much for your time and for your attention.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm going to allow council now to have a discussion on it. So, members of council, any questions or comments for administration? Nothing? Go ahead, Council Carrick. Your microphone, please.
I have some comments. So, three million dollars basically is what we're looking at here. We're just underneath for to do pickleball courts at the Valmer Centre, which, nobody's against pickleball. It's a great sport, it's growing. My concern is coming out of a reserve, what reserves are coming out of, what's the balance of that reserve? And I haven't seen a plan for the LaSalle Landing, the next phase, so perhaps this could be something that we could look at putting there where the present tennis ball courts are, and the pickleball courts are there so that we can help that facility without taking money now and moving money there later, because that's not going to be cheap down the road. So, also, there's an annual cost. We haven't even seen a budget yet. We haven't got the budget yet. We don't even know what the budget's going to be. Is it six, seven, eight percent? So, there's more concerns there. Grant money is important. I don't see any grant money associated with this. Matching funds, put a million in, get a million back. I think we need to start looking at that kind of stuff, too. But really, it comes down to just trying to promote what we do, and we get it. Pickleball is great, and I'd like to do it yesterday. But I'm more concerned about not seeing what's going on down the front road, what's going to cost us, what reserve this is coming out of, how much money is left over, where we can actually move it, and if we can move it somewhere else to help the down front road, then that's fine, too. We can certainly look at that. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. I'm going to have Mr. Langwell answer your one question anyways.
Thank you, Your Worship, members of council. So, when we did present the twenty twenty-five budget, you know, before we delayed this initiative, waiting on the results of a grant that we weren't successful with, we planned on spending that from the Canada Community Building Fund, formerly the federal gas tax. Currently, the balance in that reserve is five point one million dollars.
Thank you. Did you want to continue?
So, I guess the concern is, we still have money left over, but what are we doing in front road? That's my concern, because that's a, that that is going to be money, a lot of money. And I would rather spend money there, this money there, than actually at the Valmer, which the Valmer almost has everything. So, I would rather look at something like that down the road in the near future. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Council Renault, and then Council Richos Pagnolo.
Thank you, Your Worship. So, in prep in prep for this meeting, I needed a reminder of where the this history's been. I I went back, you know, to the first year I was on council, eleven years ago, and I remember the very first thing after about two weeks of being on council, I had to sit in on a budget session. And in that budget session, we had a delegation that asked for pickleball courts. But because it wasn't written into that year's budget- But because it wasn't written into that year's budget, we just kind of said, sorry, it's not in this year's budget, try again next year. And the next year, they came back again, and we said, you know, we're not prepared at this point. That was 10 years ago. And over time, we've done small improvements. We added Markot Park, we did a transformation there, took a basketball court out and made it into a pickleball court. We added a couple over at Heritage, but it really hasn't kept us up in in quantity as some of our neighbors. You know, it's true, Windsor has, you know, one court for every 8,000 people, but Amisburg, as well as Decumse, are more like one for every 2,300 people. We're sitting with the 10 that we have, one for every 3,500 people or 3,400 people. And we know that as, as Counselor Carrick says, we have more things to do on Front Road. We know that unfortunately, one of those things we have to do is tear out six pickleball courts. They will be gone. So I do believe that, you know, a little foresight is needed now. The money's already been allocated through the fund. That fund, I guess I could ask a question when the time comes, but the fund will be replenished. It's 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 a continual stream, and so it's it's not like we're going to burn it all out and it's gone over one cause. It's not. It's been allocated, and we have very astute finance people that made sure that that money is being put there and it can be replenished, and it is, it is sustainable, I guess is the word I'm looking for. So I I'm very much for this, this plan, and because I do believe that when we have to make that next move and we have to take out those courts, and we go down to one for every 10,000 people, we will be nowhere near adequate. And I want to be ready when that day comes, and I'd like to be, I'd like to be ahead of the ball, instead of having to try to figure out when we tear that park out and we're looking for $10 or $15 million to build cafes and things like that that are part of our dream, we're not looking for another $3 million to do, we have it now. And I'm open to more discussion around the table, but I do believe the funds are there. The only thing that I I will say in in on the other side of the coin is, you know, we had very extensive discussions at budgets last year, and we were looking for two things before we moved forward. We we forwarded 30,000, 300,000, we said, you know, do the best planning you can for 300,000. Now, the town has been able to do a bunch of planning for a tenth of that, okay? So there's still some money that hasn't been spent. At the same time, we also asked for the need. Now, we we can read the need in this room, okay? We all read the need during the public consultations. We saw you guys come out. We understand that there's a need, but we also have a formal process of the Culture and Rec Master Plan, Parks and Rec Master Plan, that we expected to have back in June. Now, it's my understanding it is now in-house, and it's getting ready, they're getting ready to 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 release it to us. But that was supposed to be the the home run, the last swing, to say, you guys got it. We just haven't got that swing yet. So I guess my question to the CAO, when are we expecting that report for the, hopefully the home run swing?
I'll probably defer to our Director of Culture and Recreation, but I believe we have the the final draft with us, and it should be here shortly, but perhaps she can provide some better insight as to the timing.
Thank you for the question, Counselor Renault. Yes, we do have the final draft, correct, that has been returned to administration for review, based on some recommendations that are some feedback that we had given the consultants. So we're going to meet internally, actually, this week to review it, and we intend to bring it to council for the October 28th meeting, October 20, whatever the last meeting in October is, we intend to bring it to council at that meeting. M. T. Brown would be here at the meeting to present that.
Is that the one that corresponds with the municipal election? When is that, the one that we canceled for the election? What's the date on that? Is that November? Okay, I'm sorry. All right. Thank you very much.
Counselor Richard Spagnuolo.
Thank you through you. Just a few comments. Okay, so as I'm looking at your your graph, Mr. Mara, so 920,000 is the cost for 10 courts. For 48 spaces, parking spaces is 490,000. Is there something that we can do in phases to eliminate such a high cost? That's one question I do have. The other question is, are there still grant, upcoming grants that we can apply for to alleviate some of these costs? And then another question I have is sponsorships. Is there opportunities for the Pickleball Association, for the town of LaSalle, to seek sponsorships for each of the courts, the washroom area, all of that, just to bring down cost? I get the need that you guys really want these pickleball courts, and I completely understand that, but there's also a need for other things in our community. So I'm a little bit torn on where I am right now. I I love the, your, your speech on saying it brings people to LaSalle. I love that. And I love that it's going to bring revenue to restaurants and things like that, and I absolutely agree with you. It is just the cost in front of me that's a little bit mind-boggling to me, and I just, I'm trying to understand if we can do something in phases, or if we can have, keep applying for grants, or sponsorship opportunities to a little bit alleviate some of those costs. And then the other comment is, if we were to move it to Front Road, what would that timeline be? Because realistically, we are enhancing Front Road, so these courts could add extra value to Front Road. I'm just trying to think of the timelines on that. So if those answers can be, thank you.
Okay, so there's several questions there. I can start with the one question about grants. As everyone is aware, we've applied several times for a recreation grant, and unfortunately, we have, again, been unsuccessful. However, this August, we did go to a MO conference in Ottawa, and we did have a delegation, Mr. Mara and Ms. Fenero, join me to meet with the Ministry of Sport to delegate for the request for them to open another stream, because there isn't currently a stream available to apply for it. But they have said they do expect other ones come along in the near future, which we will just continue to keep applying for. And, you know, those funds may not end up going towards this project, but then more of those dollars could go towards something else that we're doing. Mr. Mara, I'll have you answer the other few questions.
Thank you. So Madam Mayor covered the grant. Sponsorships, there's always opportunities for sponsorships. To date, we have had no one approach us for sponsorship. We don't actively go seeking them, but certainly, we are always open to hearing and having somebody come forward and sponsor aspects and items. As council is aware, one of the projects that we are working on through strategy engagement is a sponsorship program, but again, we're a bit delayed on that, and we will be coming back at some point in time with a formal sponsorship program and what's available throughout the town for sponsorships. With respect to phasing, certainly, we can always do things in phasing, like you had seen, what's built out there is four tennis courts. That was part of a phase. It did not include any parking. So we just built four tennis courts. Unfortunately, we thought, building it close to an existing parking lot, people would use an existing parking lot, but that's not the case. They actually park all over the grass and on diat. So at this point, we have experienced that. And so if council wanted to, they could build just the 10 pickleball courts without the washrooms and without the, without the parking. But 10 pickleball courts is 40 players, and you've got 40 cars. So I don't know where they're going to park, and we're just going to have a mess, and it 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 wouldn't be a recommendation of ours. You could, you could remove the washrooms, and we could put porta-johns out there if council wished to do that as well. Again, you can pick and choose, we've provided you a little bit of a menu style here, that you could pick and choose what you wanted to build. If you wanted to go down to only six courts, we could build six courts. And so we can do a number of iterations with this, but we would recommend that you at least have some form of parking. The washrooms are council's direction. We've heard it loud and clear that that's what we need, and things of that nature. With respect to Front Road, the decision was made by council to remove all courts from Front Road of the LaSalle Landing. That was part of the 2021 concept that was presented. The 21, the 2021 concept was to show how we can reproduce tennis courts and pickleball courts someplace else, as opposed to being in our premier waterfront park. So that was the decision that was made. So none of the current concepts of the LaSalle Landing have any court reproduct, re rebuilds at Front Road. So those courts will be removed from Front Road, from the LaSalle Landing. That was a direction of council in 2021, so there is no courts being rebuilt as part of the ultimate full build-out on Front Road. Front Road has its own reserve, council is aware, through the budget process. We do, we do have our own reserve that council continues to increase, to provide budget on an annual basis, and that goes to put in there. As I had mentioned in previous, as part of this next upcoming 2026 budget, you are going to get a full report on where we stand with the LaSalle Landings, what's next, what are all of the previous, what are all the various elements coming forward as part of the LaSalle Landing? And we will come back with an itemized list saying, here's where we at, here's our estimate, here's our funding and budget and and business plan. Again, the business plan that was put forward originally is sound, it just now needs to be updated relative to what's been built, what's upcoming, and updated costs. So I hope I've answered all of all of the questions relative, I had grants, sponsorship, phasing, and LaSalle Landings, but if there's something I missed, please let me know.
Thank you very much. Before I go back to you, I'm just going to see if anyone else wants to speak, okay? Anything to say? No? Uh, Deputy Mayor Capata?
Thank you, your worship. My, my inbox is full, my phone is full, I've heard the public. Here's my concern. My number one concern is there is a pickleball facility that's being built in our community. I'm looking to, the CAO, for his view on the municipal, on, simply put, the municipality competing with private enterprise. We've tried to attract private enterprise, I don't know if we, this is just one of the questions that I've been, that I've been asking myself. My friend, Counselor Renault, went and toured the facility, and it's, to paraphrase, it's not ready. But again, my concern is, much the same way, if we build a facility down at Front Road at the LaSalle Landing, we should not, I'd hope we wouldn't build a restaurant to compete with our other private enterprises. I hope we wouldn't build anything to compete with bringing industry or enterprise here. That's my concern, and I just, I'm just looking for your input, sir, through the, through the mayor, so I can better understand how we are or how we are not competing with private enterprise.
I'm going to turn it over to the CAO. Before I do, I've also heard the exact same comment from some members of the community, and I think I just have to remind everyone that we operate a fitness facility in the Volmer, and yet we have multiple fitness places in the town of LaSalle. We also have yoga classes, as I reminded, also Pilates classes, and we have those facilities as well in the town of LaSalle. We are offering something different, and in my opinion, having an outdoor pickleball facility isn't comparable to an indoor facility. Those are two totally different things that are serving the community. But as far as non-competes or competes, I'll allow the CAO to answer that.
Thank you for the question. It is quite often that municipalities like LaSalle across, across Ontario are faced with the dilemma of competing with the private sector. And I can tell you that in most municipalities, there are certain amenities or services that are offered that do compete with the private sector. It's not widespread, mind you, and most municipalities are very conscious of the fact of trying to limit those opportunities to the greatest degree possible. But limiting it and eliminating it are two different things. I think most municipalities offer some level of, level of competition, if you will, whether it's, some do rental of space and compete against warehousing or other retail-type space. Some have active business parks that they're, that they're trying to, that they're trying to develop, and they compete against the private sector in terms of development. And so it it's, it's not a, it's much of the gray. It's not, it's not on one side or the other, it is in the gray area. In terms of this particular facility that we're proposing as part of, as part of the budget conversation continuing on today, to today, I think that, I think the mayor's correct in saying that the competition against what is the proposed local business that's looking to do this, there will be some overlap. You know, I think everyone has to realize there will be some, but I think the outdoor pickleball experience is different than the indoor pickleball experience. And I think we would, if, I think we may be under more criticism in terms of what we offer at the event center through the evenings, and, sorry, through the daytimes and in the winters, where we offer indoor pickleball there. I think that one would be probably more open to criticism than an outdoor type of facility. So I think from that perspective, I would also say that, you know, there are municipalities, you know, again, the municipality next door offers a municipal golf course, and yet has private golf courses, and has those available for private and for public use as well. So it isn't, it isn't black and white. It is, there is a gray in that area, and municipalities are very careful in terms of trying not to get into that, but the reality is, is there are some functions that we do that do overlap with the private sector. So I think from this particular, again, proposal that's before you, I think it falls in lines with what municipalities across Ontario are offering more and more of. I don't think that it's going to offer the same level of service. I think that a, a private business will perhaps offer a more concierge-type service when it comes to their members, as opposed to what we might, we might offer in the outdoor courts. So I hope that's answered the question. I don't know if there's a follow-up, but happy to try to answer.
A subsequent, your worship. Again, so my friend, Counselor Spagnuolo, has talked about sponsorships, again, to bring the cost down, and I'll admit, I look at the ages of some of the folks here, and I look at my friend, Mr. Burns, and I, I will use him as an example. My children skated at the Volmer in LMHA. I don't know if everybody here in the room had kids that played hockey, so I know that there's, without a doubt, some of the segments of the population who told me they'll never use it have screamed at me loudly and clearly. And I know that in a community, we build things to support each other, and my biggest concern was the, the competition component. And again, I understand the gray, I just wanted to make sure that, again, you've, you've brought up winter pickleball in the event center. So I guess my subsequent question to you, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. CAO, was, would that end with this, with this facility being built? And then would we take the event center and use it for other things? Again, I just want to make sure that we're going down a path that's sustainable and meets the needs of all members of the community.
So I'll answer the question, I'll try to keep it brief, just because it is perhaps not related directly to this proposal. I, I think invariably, our event center is becoming more and more popular, even in the winter months, and I think we're headed down the path of not being able to offer or offer very, very limited time slots at the event center for winter pickleball. So I think by virtue of us getting busier with event business, the pickleball, indoor pickleball business that we do right now will start to go, will start to diminish. It's just a, you know, I think it's just a function of, of pickleball wanting more time and growing, but our event business growing even faster. And so I think that will likely get pushed, if you will, to the private sector more so. I, you know, we, I wouldn't, I can't sit here today and tell you that for this upcoming winter, we won't have pickleball. I can't say that, because I don't know what our schedule looks like. We're trying to accommodate as much of the public interest as possible, whether it be through, through events offerings, or having open space where, in this case, pickleball can come in and play. So we're trying to balance that as best we can, but I know in speaking with the Director of, the Director of Culture and Recreation, it, that balance is getting harder and harder each year that we're open, because we're just more full at the, at the event center. And we understand that pickleball, those folks want a schedule that they can depend on, that they can, that they can coordinate around, and sometimes our business doesn't quite work that way. So I, I think invariably, it's going to switch that way, but it will take a bit more time for it to do that.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. You've answered my questions. And your worship, if I have some more questions after Mr. Burns and my colleagues speak, I'll, I'll rise again.
Okay, I wasn't here in '91, so I don't know what those discussions were, but thankful to my colleague, Mr. Renault, for filling me in on that. I'm glad that you want to be a partnership, and that's important to me. So in 1993, '95, LaSalle Charity Golf Classic, which was, I was one member of that team, we built the, basically, basketball court there where pickleball went the first time. I think in '97 or something, we turned it over, and that cost 25,000 to put up, and we gave the Scottish gentleman who came at that time, we gave him the key to the thing and said, you run it, and away you go. He was from Heritage. That's what I remember about that court. My biggest concern was reserved. My biggest concern was reserves. Do we have it all or don't we have it all? And I've done some talking with different people in pickleball. And unfortunately, the American experience is much more private sector than it is here. If you go play competitive pickleball in Michigan, it's $40 an hour U S per player on that court and they have the restaurants and do whatever. So my only concern here is if you are a partnership, then be prepared to fundraise and help us with that cost. Because at the end of the day, I think everyone said it, and as a senior, I'm glad you guys are there and you're active. I used the Volmer. I said when it was built, I'd never use it, but I have to use it now to stay in the shape that I should be in. And so that partnership, we haven't been very successful like the American style, whether it's hockey, whether, whatever it is. But you said you would be part of that and I believe that we should be. And the, the rates to you need to be fair so that we try to eliminate as much of that cost. Mr. Langwais gave us that we do have the money in the bank and that was another concern. That if we didn't have it, I wouldn't be voting for it, in all honesty, with this year's budget. I am prepared to make a motion and say today, we promised you a year ago in December, we would go to design. I don't know if the projected cost today is what we presented to you is actually the cost. No one will know that till we go there. And if you've done anything around your house, any little repair of any kind, things aren't the way they were before COVID. Everything is much more expensive. But I think if we made a commitment to you, I think I made the motion that we would go to design and I'm prepared to put that on there and see what the costs come back. It'll probably be March and then a final decision can be made. If we don't go to design today, then we failed you. And I'm a person that if I, and I think this council has always made a commitment and followed through on that commitment. So I'm not saying I'm going to build it at this point, but if I don't have a design and I don't get the cost, I can't make an honest decision on that. And in my 27 years of politics, I think that's a fair decision to give you. I liked your presented, the presentation you made at budget sessions and I commend you for that. And you're not much of a speaker, sir, but I think you're much better than I am. So I'm prepared to make a motion to go, go to design and come back with an actual cost at this time.
Thank you. I'll have you hold on to that motion.
Okay, go hold on it.
Councillor Renault, you had a question?
Just, yeah, a couple of questions. So for, for Peter, obviously the next natural step is the detailed design. Can the detailed design be done for what was left from our original allocation? Can it be done for 270,000 or less?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we believe detailed design can be done. Detailed design is only one component. After detailed design, you got to go to tender to get the real price. And, you know, we typically don't go for tender and waste contractors' time unless we are going to go forward with a project. So again, it's a public meeting. Contractors are hearing the conversation and, and see the reports. And so we do not want to go forward with a tender if we don't have council support. So we can do a detailed design. It may sit on the shelf. Things may change in two or three years when it's just something that we end up modifying or, or changing. So we could do that. I, I believe we can still do that for the remainder of the $270,000 that we have. But we're not going to get a true cost of it until we go out for tender. And we just, unless council is willing to do that, we don't want to put that out in the market and for contractors to do that without having an idea that we are going to award something at the end of it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And if we were to go to detailed design without the, without the commitment to the tender right now, I guess my question is about the report that you provided for 30,000. I mean, I would think that those numbers are pretty close to market value right now without us having to go through another, for, for detailed design to tell us that. I think we've, if you could explain to us how the two things are separate, it might, might help us a little bit to understand.
So the numbers we have provided you are based on what we paid for the tennis courts that are right there. We have a cost when we went out for tender, a competitive tendering process to build those tennis courts at that location. So we have a number for square foot of asphalt for courts. That is what's been used to interpolate here. Our architect has a lot of experience with buildings. We have experience with, with parking lots. And so those numbers are pretty close to where we believe we will be at with respect to actually going out for tender. So again, that, that's really where we're at. You know, I've heard a number of conversations about how we compare to other people's facilities, what they've built. And again, it all comes down to at the timing of our tendering. Each various municipality gets different dollar values for different things. We, we continue to work through trying to find the best way to, to do estimates. But this particular one, because we have some really recent numbers with what was built at the tennis courts, the exact same location, the exact same ground conditions, we don't expect very much variation from what we have here. So we are very comfortable with the number you have in front of you today at the 2.8 million dollars all in plus applicable taxes. So again, that, that's really where we stand. As, as I said, we can go down detailed design and can sit on the shelf and, and spend the money, sit on the shelf. But, and then wait for the conversation about when do we actually pull the tender and things of that nature. If that's council's wishes, we can certainly do that as well. So I, we look forward to, we look towards council for their direction.
Thank you, Peter.
Councillor Justignol and Councillor Carrick, and then I'm going to say a few things.
Okay, thank you. Peter, if you, or Mr. Mara, if you were to go to a detailed design, timeline on that and how long does this delay? So if you said that if everything was approved and it would be ready possibly for July 2026, how much further delay would this be?
Again, if you provided us permission to proceed with detailed design, it would still be on the same timeline. We would initiate that right away. We would probably be ready for tendering probably sometime November, December, I would guess. And then we wouldn't go until council says it. So I'd then have to come back to council again. And the numbers aren't going to change very much. Again, we, there's enough information. This is why we call preliminary design to give us that high level indication of what's required. And that's why we went through this and spent the $30,000 to get to this point. So, so again, it won't affect the timelines. It's just it's another step in the process. Come back to council again, go for tendering and, and it's up to council's discretion.
So in reality, we could really save that $270,000 and put that towards this 2.8 million dollars if we don't use it towards another design. We can avoid that step is what I'm saying. And then that money can be allocated towards this.
It is part of this. It will never be throwaway. It's always part of this. It's just if you don't proceed past tendering and you don't do anything with it, it's just going to sit on the shelf. So again, we could spend the 270 additional thousand dollars, but if you don't go to tendering, it's just going to sit on the shelf. That is then true throwaway at this point.
Maybe just to help clarify, I think if I understand the questions from members of council, if we proceed to, if, if you get authorization to proceed to detailed design, that would, at that point, I, I think we would need some direction at this point to say, proceed with the detailed design, go to tender, and then we'd come back to council. Or conversely, we could proceed to detailed design and then wait for council direction to go to tender. The, the risk in that second option is that over time, the detailed design gets stale dated. And so we, we would need to have some, we'd have a bit of challenge with that depending on, on the length of the delay. But if, if council's prepared, we would go to detailed design. We would issue the tender as part of that, that process. And then that whole package comes back to the council for approval. At that point, council makes a decision.
Councillor Carrick?
All right, just more questions. So in regards to, I'm going to talk about the Front Road again. We're coming up to phase two soon, right? We did the first five years, apparently, is my understanding. So that's going to cost a serious amount of money and built into the budget if we want to move forward with something else. So again, things can change in the phase two. We can readjust if we have to. It's not written in stone. I know council made a decision. But we can always bring up some, we can always bring up another plan if council so chooses. I'm open to all that stuff. I guess the problem, concern is you take it out of the reserve, it has to be put back, right? And where does that money come from to put it back? That's one question. If we were to look at going down, I'm just throwing this out there. If we were to look at going down Front Road, we put pickleball courts there, we leave all the tennis courts at the Volmer. And then there's two separate entities and it stays the left side of the road behind the pool. We can put additional parking spaces in there for Front Road. So we have more parking there in behind the pickleball courts and we can use that section up. So that's just an option I'm, I'm, I'm putting, I'm just talking about. Not that it would, would happen, but that's something I'd like to see, to be honest with you. Secondly, I'm, this, I'm having a real hard time dealing with this until we get the budgets. Because we're going to be looking at some serious percentages to start, I'm guessing. So I really want to get a good idea what we're actually dealing with and putting stuff back before we actually go down and start spending extra money. That's, that's my concern. And I know there's a built-in cost at the end, but those costs are always getting inflated. So I just want to make sure that we're doing the right things here. And I want to overturn every stone and rock there is, just to make sure that we are doing the right thing, spending this kind of money if we do decide to spend this kind of money. Thank you.
Did you want an answer to any of those questions right now? Mr. Langwais, I don't know if you have anything handy to answer any of those?
Sure, with, with the waterfront. So what we've historically done is, you know, we've built up our reserve every year. Typically, it's been requested a 1% increase per year, which is about 400,000. Some, some years we've reduced it a little bit. And then we have other funding sources. We have a little bit coming from development charges. We've, we've funded some from, from, from some debt. And then also some from the Canada Community Building Fund as well. So right now in that reserve, we have 2.7 million dollars. A little bit of that will still be spent probably on some of the final payments for the, the skate and walking trail. But not too much. And then we're going to continue, you know, we're going to continue to bring that to budget to build up. We're going to come, come with a, with a phase, the next phase, you know, over the next five to 10 years. No timelines set in stone. If, you know, if the economy, you know, can, if there's trouble in the economy and we want to lower the tax rate, we reduce the amount that we're contributing and it could just, you know, take a little bit longer to do some of these projects. You know, when it comes to waterfront versus Volmer projects, we can kind of look at them together and what we want to prioritize. And that's the big question. Do we want to prioritize doing some more stuff at the waterfront? Or do we want to prioritize doing some more stuff at the Volmer? Or do we want to prioritize doing projects at both locations which cost more money? It's all about timing and, and priorities of council. You know, responsibly, we build up the funding before we spend our money. When there's a big project like the event center and the skate trail, we'll issue debt, but we've already built up the funding to pay for that debt. We never put the cart before the, before the horse. We make sure that we put the horse before, before the cart. And, you know, we're, we're going to have, we have sound financial plans. We're going to come back to council during budget sessions with the next plan for the, for the, for the waterfront. And, and the timing of, of those projects included, it's all going to depend on how fast we want to build up that reserve.
Thank you. Mr. Mara?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect to what's located at the waterfront, as I mentioned, we, we're going to be back before council, but we're currently working on a plan approved by council that does not have courts down at the waterfront. And so if, if council wishes to revisit that, then we probably need to know that sooner than later because we're coming back with a plan. There, there, there has been a lot of consultation relative to what's being built at the waterfront. The overall concept, it's been, it's been approved by council. That's what we're working towards. That's what we have been, been bringing forward through phases. So again, we're going to come back at budget time with a full report. But if it's not what you are looking for, then we need to know that sooner than later so that we can get back out to the public, come up with different concepts and things of that nature. But again, I'm, I'm not sure where that lands with, with council's thought or things of that nature. But certainly it's not in the current plan to build any courts down there. There are identified pockets of land out at the LaSalle Landing that are meant for different purposes and that's what we're continuing to move forward with. But certainly, as councillor Carrick has said, that can change and we're happy to have that change. Just looking for that direction, whether that needs to change or how council wishes to handle that, that aspect and, and moving forward with, with anything relative to LaSalle Landing.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry for taking too much time. But, okay. So just so we're understanding, so I guess if, it's just by chance this does move forward, I guess my question to the Pickleball Association and everybody in this audience, do you have a plan to raise funds to help offset some of the costs that we're committed to put here, if that's the case?
Can't really, there's nowhere to ask for that. I mean, that's just a question you can, but there's not really a, they can't commit to that. Go ahead, councillor Renault, and then we'll try to, I'll move on with my questions.
Absolutely. So just my last question, and this is, this is in conjunction with what councillor Carrick was asking. So earlier in the meeting, Mr. Langwais, you told us how much was in that, that capital reserve. And you told us that we'd be spending about half of it. But then his question concerned how we were going to replenish it. So can you tell me what we got from gas tax last year? You have time to click. It's okay.
It's 1.7 per year that we receive. And that's pretty steady from year to year. It actually usually increases a little bit. Some, some of our different reserves unfortunately have went down, but that's one that's pretty steady year over year.
Yes, you can comment.
Again, I know there was, there's been a question, and again, it's unfair to ask this group of people, how much would you like to give us? So we understand that. But if, if, if council wants us to have that conversation with the Pickleball Association, certainly we'll take direction from council and we'll meet with them to develop some sort of plan as to what, what they might be capable of through fundraising efforts, whether it's through fundraising or whether it's through user fees or whether it's through special, special charges in terms of on top of rates. We can certainly have that conversation. This is probably not the right forum to do that. We should probably do that, again, as, as part of our, our team meeting with, with their executive and we work through that, that process.
Okay, so I have lots of comments. I've jotted down a lot of things. Now I just got to keep track of it all. 11 years, 11 years we've been discussing pickleballs. And now in 2021, we had the concept of a great pickleball court facility that we now realized needed some tweaks and changes. And now we have something even better. We have done our due diligence. We have asked administration to go back, to come up with a design, to see if it fits in our budget. A little over a year ago, we had this conversation and we sent it to budget sessions. I don't think we can keep delaying this. I think the question for council needs to be, do you want pickleball carts or not? Because if we keep holding this every year and we push it back, the cost is only going to continue to increase. We talk about being a healthy, active community. This is what promotes a healthy, active community. It gives our residents of all ages the facilities they want to be able to use for recreation. Mental health, physical health, building a community. That's what we're all about. I, I have some concerns with the idea of phasing. We've done it before where we've tried to phase things in and I've used this as an example before, which is the baseball diamonds at the Volmer. The cost came in and we decided, you know what, take out the lighting. It's too expensive. We'll do it later. What year did we put in the baseball diamonds? Do we know? Top of our head, anybody?
2010, 2009, 2010?
Okay, so 2010. And do we have lights at the baseball diamonds? Because it's never going to be at the top of the priority list. So phasing is a very big concern of mine, but if that's something council needs to consider to move this project forward, I would say, let's move forward, let's get the design work, let's put it out tender. And if by chance it comes in above, we can do exactly what we just did at LaSalle Landing where we didn't build a indoor facility and we pulled it out. And so maybe that means the washrooms don't get built. Parking, I can't say no to parking. I'm sorry. We already have an issue down there as it is. So to me, the parking needs to move forward. We can wait for grants, sure. But if we waited for grants for everything in the town of LaSalle, we wouldn't have a town hall. We wouldn't have the Volmer. We wouldn't have most of everything at LaSalle Landing. most of everything at LaSalle Landing. As much as today was a fantastic announcement for the town of LaSalle, we don't get those very often. And so I can't say we should sit here and rely on grants. We will keep applying for them, but then those funds can be used towards the next phase of the Volmer or the next phase of LaSalle Landing. And so I, I'm hesitant at trying to find a reason not to move forward with this. We put the hole in the capital budget last year. Putting it forward to budget again this year doesn't do anything. We've just been told it's $35,000 that is going to be requested to operate these starting in 2026 mid-year. So half of that for next year. That's what will be put in the budget. The 3 million is not being put in the budget because it's part of capital. So I don't understand at this point what our holdback is. We said we wanted them. We've done everything. It's been a very long time. Our residents have asked for it. They've come out and droves multiple times. I had a fantastic Monday with the mayors with many of you. And you were very passionate and I respect what you have done. I respect that you've all come together. You did a fantastic presentation. I thought you presented it very well. And I believe that we need to support this because you, as our senior community, community and some of our younger people have asked for it and it's been way too long that we haven't been able to move forward with this. I, I really do believe that we should be moving forward with this at this time. I don't see a reason not to. Like I said, yes, it's going to be a, a hard tax year, but that has nothing to do with what this is tonight. This is different. This is capital. This is not going to be worked into the budget. The only thing worked into the budget for this year, unless I'm wrong, please correct me, would be that portion of operating, which could be half of the 35,000 for 2026. So if, correct me? Yes?
That is correct.
Okay. I, I don't think, I, I could go on forever. I've, I've written down so many things, but I really do believe in this project. I really do believe that we should be moving forward with this. We've had this discussion. We sent it to budget once. I'm not willing to send it to budget again. And I, I would, I would like to see the project move forward. That's all I've got. Counselor Burns?
I will move the recommendation based on what we found out here. To build it and we'll move forward. If it's in our $3 million budget, then we can phase if, if it's more. So we've been told that. So I, I'd make a motion that as it says here, it's basically that council approve the construction of 10 pickleball courts, washrooms and parking area. Thank you.
So I have a mover and is a question or second? I need a second or first?
A second at your worship and Steve, I've got a friendly amendment for my, for Mr. Burns.
Okay. So I have a mover, Counselor Burns, Deputy Mayor is our secondor. Go ahead.
What I'd like to do is what the, the CAO spoke about, to have our administration speak with their leadership to determine whatever, I, I wasn't writing quickly enough, Mr. CAO, but you were very eloquent in what you are going to direct to do. So I support Mr. Burns' as motion and I guess I paraphrase that administration speak with the pickleball folks to determine what is, what can be done. And I, and I leave that for, for admin to, to determine? No, no, just, just the amendment. Like I, I'm fully supportive. I just, I like what the CAO said and I just want to make sure.
And I consider that a friendly amendment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just give us one minute to make sure we have it written down correctly.
If it makes things easier, we'll just take direction from council to meet with, with the Pickleball Association.
That's perfect. That's just, I just want to make sure that's part of the motion. That's all.
Okay. Counselor Carrick, go ahead.
So I will support the motion. I apologize for asking the question. I probably shouldn't ask, but I saw a lot of heads nodding. So thank you.
Thank you. So the, just for everyone to understand where we're at with things right now. The motion on the floor is that the report of the manager of engineering dated August 14th, 2025 regarding pickleball courts at the Volmer complex be received and that council approves the construction of 10 pickleball courts, washroom facilities and a parking area. That is the motion being put forward and I will call the question, all in favor. That was just verbal direction.
That's just, we're, it's not a friendly amendment?
No, it's a verbal direction.
Verbal, that's fine. That's absolutely fine.
Okay.
Yes.
All in favor. And that carries unanimously. Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
If you hurry, I hear there's four free courts on front road if you hurry. There's nobody out there right now.
Okay. Moving on, we have our consent agenda. There are just two items. Any comments on those? If not, we'll receive them together?
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive. Counselor Burns, support. Counselor Carrick, all in favor. That carries. I'd hold off, but I know this is a pretty quick part of the meeting. So, uh, committee matters, item one, accessibility advisory committee meetings from May 21st, 2025. Any questions or comments? None? Motion to receive. Deputy Mayor Capata, support. Counselor Burns, all in favor. And that carries. Any questions or statements by council members? Deputy Mayor Capata?
Just a quick one, your worship, to, uh, the staff. Last call before fall. Last call before fall. My children come of age for last call. So last year, my boy turned 19. This year, my daughter turned 19. They did not have fun. They had a good time watching as they put their teachers and their friends' parents kibitz. So when you get that from a 19-year-old that they had fun, kudos to the staff.
Thank you. Any other questions or, uh, yes, tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM is the Vipers Home opener. If anyone would like to come out and support a local hockey team. Any other? None? We don't have any notices of motion and we didn't have a closed session this evening. So we move right into our bylaws and there are four. And we're asking that the following bylaws be given a first, second, and third reading and finally passed. Bylaw 2025-074 being a bylaw to amend by law 8873 being a bylaw to provide for the minor improvement of the Lafferty Drain in the town of LaSalle and the County of Essex. 2025-075 being a bylaw to stop up, close and sell an alley system running north-south, lying west of lots 168 to 174, registered plan 635 LaSalle. 2025-076 being a bylaw to stop up, close and sell an alley system running north-south, lying west of lots 1 through 8, registered plan 848 LaSalle. And then finally, 2025-079 being a bylaw to repeal by law 8826, a medical-tiered response agreement between Essex Windsor EMS, the City of Windsor and County of Essex Fire Services, housekeeping item. Moved by Counselor Reynolds, support by Counselor Richa Spagnolo, all in favor. And that carries. With that, our confirmatory bylaw 2025-081, hold on. Um, I'm not going to read it. We're just going to post it. Be given a first, second, third reading and finally passed. Counselor Reynolds, Counselor Carrick, all in favor. Fantastic. That is approved. Schedule of meetings are listed below. I missed my crowd. I was going to say thank you to all of them, but they all ran away rejoicing. So I think before we could change our mind. Uh, but thank you for joining us in person and online. Have a good night.